Are you taking attendance? I guess Michelle is here.
Yeah, I see Michelle. We do have, of course, Ms. Marini, Ms. Berry here, Mr. Dotson, and our attorney, Ms. Jones, who is present on the Zoom, Mr. Feinstein, Chairman Lindberg, and Ms. Granberry is here, present with us in locations.
Yes, sir. Stand for invocation. I'm going to pose on you again.
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to do it. You would bow with me in this prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, Lord, so thank you for this day that you've given us. Thank you for many blessings in our life, taking and watching over each one of us and our family. By the way, as to as we go forth in this meeting tonight, that everything here discussed be beneficial to the City of Mount Pleasant's residents. And all board members present, Lord, we ask that you use good discernment when deciding these rules and regulations that are to guide here in our historic district. We give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I'm going to be the latest in the press.
I thought it was to the black.
To the black, United States of America. And to the Republic of the United States. One nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is approval of the minutes. The minutes were emailed yesterday and hand delivered today.
I have a question on the minute. Third, from the bottom, Cory says the paint colors can be regulated if the approved color palette is not included in the design guidelines, then it would be hard to reinforce. I don't remember that. Is that true, Cory? Is that what she said? You're muted.
Hang on, let me read it.
Third paragraph from the bottom.
She did say that.
Sure.
I'm pretty sure she did. I remember her saying that. I think we discussed not putting colors in there and having just a suggestion, you know, like a color chart that we can suggest.
Mm-hmm. That's right. We did.
When I was commenting last time, it was when we were saying that we were going to refer people to another corporation to then let them decide what colors they could have. That was the goal. I was trying to discourage y'all from doing that. If you want to incorporate something in this document, which is what I think actually happened, that's fine. You can regulate the colors that way. I was trying to discourage you from saying that you needed to go to another entity and have them tell you which colors you could use, because that's confusing. And you're delegating authority.
Do approve.
Now, we have a motion from Ms. Berry to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. And I think that was Donna that seconded that.
Yes, I'll second the motion.
We have a second from Ms. Marini. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any gains? Motion passes, sir. Old business. All right, let's roll into into the new business, the guidelines that Mr. Archibald has been working diligently on.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, everybody present here. And I'm going to pull my mask down just so everybody can hear me. I did take liberty with the guidelines, reformatted the guidelines. Also, added some verbiage, particularly on the first page. And later on in the document, there were some things added such as guidelines for murals and the such. I know that y'all haven't had a lot of time to review these. So I do appreciate those that have looked at them. And we can certainly discuss them more in depth tonight. I don't, you know, expect a vote of approval or disapproval tonight just because of the lack of time that everybody was given to fully vet the guidelines. But just so the board knows, this went through several vetting processes already. Ms. Jones has looked over this document at least twice, probably three times now. I've had two of our ladies here who are in admin here at City Hall that have vetted it for edits. And I think we've got a pretty clear and concise document. The majority, ninety-six point seven percent of what was originally in the document is still there. It might have been changed. It might not have been located in the same area if you compare the two documents together. But a high percentage that was in the original document is still there. The major things that were added, as I indicated before, was going to be on page four, which Ms. Jones actually helped me with this quite a bit. The very first heading, purpose of the Historic Zoning Commission. We outlined regulatory reasoning behind this document. And then a preface was added, and I think, you know, just going on, everything else stayed the same.
Robert.
Yes, ma'am.
The what was added in purpose of Historic Zoning Commission? That comes with the conversation that we had at the last meeting about which document controls in the event of a conflict. So that was the main purpose of that. You can, I have a redlined document, but it's really just the, I guess, second and third paragraphs that were changed.
Thank you. Did anybody have any questions or concerns over that specific section? You know, just in relation to the new document? And you might just be.
I would be interested to put that to legal. Section there from the CCA. Again, I like the references also to the Department of Interior.
Yes.
I think that's good. I think it looks really, really good. I have one comment. It will be a long one down, but on page thirty-seven. There are about three references to probably a little. You probably need a little. The one in the first paragraph that's indeed, there's one in section two C, and section three A.
Thank you very, thank you.
That probably needs to be changed.
Yes, sir.
What page?
Thirty-seven.
Oh, I see it.
Thirty-seven.
Yeah, just do a Ctrl-F on your work document, type in Collierville. It's late, we're not blessed.
Yeah, that would be.
That's actually not an issue. I have to do a little more than Ctrl-F because this is a copy and paste sheet that I got from Collierville, actually. So I have to do a little more work than just the Ctrl-F, but it can be removed. I appreciate Mr. Dotson finding that as well.
Yeah. Hey, it's, I don't believe in readmitting the will if it's there.
Yes.
Robert, I can convert VDM into Word.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. I actually have a desktop app that, or a system that'll convert as well. But I do appreciate your offer there. So that'll definitely be changed. And once again, I'm not expecting approval or disapproval or not by no means, but I think, other than, you know, minor corrections throughout that you might notice, such as
Do you think that?
Mr. Dotson pointed out.
Do you think it would be a good idea, I don't know if this is necessary or if it's more trouble than it's worth to say what the historic zoning districts are?
We're going to have to match the indicated though.
That's a separate process. You create the zoning district through the you'll propose it to the planning commission or to the city commission, I think. I outlined a process in the email, but I can resend it. We're not.
I know. That's okay.
Yeah, I think that's sort of, that's the seven in our process, which we need to get to soon.
So Cory, Cory, speaking to that, I do, I do have a map on page thirty-eight that I included. That not being approved as of yet, does that need to be pulled?
It's on the back, yeah.
The very last page on the back.
That's the one to be approved by the commission.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Where are the minutes, appendix A right front in this document? Are we attempting to, like, bring this down with this document?
Well, that's the proposed zone that we would be presenting to the city commission, but it hasn't, hasn't yet received any approval.
Or is it the commercial down down?
Yes. I mean, I can remove that from the document.
I think probably we just need your approval of it because it's not, we can't create this down through this process.
Okay. I've got an X on mine, and I'll take that off the document altogether.
Robert, there's a couple spelling errors in here, too. I'll highlight them and send it back to you.
Thank you.
Since we got eight, since you have to make those corrections anyway, and it's nothing big, but there, I saw a couple of them.
Okay. The more eyes on it, the better. That's why I went through two of the ladies here, and they edited what they seen. So, yeah, anything that y'all see, I guess, prior to our next meeting, please just email me copies of that so I can address the changes.
And since, Robert and I discussed this earlier today, since to make changes to these, because we know that we're going to come up on some things that, maybe in here that just doesn't work or something, so to make changes to them, it's not a huge process that we have to go through. Is that correct?
There's still a public hearing process, but it's in front of the Historic Zoning Commission. It'll be the same process that you, you have to pass at this time. We just have to do it again.
Okay.
But it doesn't go through every commission.
So, yeah, I just, I just think that that's something that we can know that if, if something in here doesn't work, that we can make those changes, then it's not some big process that we have to go through to do it.
You have control over the design guidelines, which is, but the zones have to be approved a different way.
Right.
I have a question. In going through the steps that we're going through, I thought that our process was that we would have the design guidelines and the end of that. And then we would have a public hearing or let the public have input before it goes to the commission for approval. Is that? Have I got my steps wrong or?
No, we'll have a public hearing before we go to the commission.
Let me pull up my email again, but the, my memory is that the designer D guidelines have to be approved before you can propose the zones.
I thought it, I thought you got public input before you sent it to the commission for approval, but I may be wrong. I was just looking, yeah, I don't know.
When you are, you, the Historic Zoning Commission, are approving them, it will be at a public hearing. Hang on, let me, let me check this.
Your meetings are public hearings.
I know, but I thought. I thought we had some public input, like them, before we sent it to the commission, but correct me if I'm wrong there.
Cory's looking at that. This is Kate. I think it would be helpful for her to resend that since since time has passed since we all looked at it initially.
Robert put a copy out within the package today.
Okay, good. Maybe I need to see it again.
Well, I don't know. Maybe I'm just looking at it, Robert. I don't know. Make your step six and tell them what it says.
Propose a local historic zoning district and create the accompanying design guidelines. The staffing needs is local government staff, possible support from consultants or THC. Decision maker can be initiated by the HCC, a community group, or other interested parties. The product as a result is the design guidelines, map, and inventory of proposed districts. Public participation, public meeting with option of hearing. Is that correct? Is that the six that you wanted to read, Mr. Dotson?
Yeah, is that, do we have to go through that process before we send it to the commission?
Or we send it out with the notice? I don't know if that's Google to do, but send it out with the notice for people to look at it and then come to the public meeting with the mission?
Well, I don't know. I just.
So we're on number one. So the next step is you get reasonable notice of a public hearing before the Historic Zoning Commission. And then you have a hearing. So those are the next steps. So that's where you'll get the public comment on these guidelines. And then you can adopt the guidelines.
Okay, so you're right, Dr. Dotson.
Okay.
So we.
And then after the public has opportunity to their input, then we send it to the commission for approval. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
You make a recommendation to the commission.
Right.
They establish the zone. That's where the, the creation of the commercial district or commercial historic district comes into play. But then we'll have to already have these guidelines so they know what they're really.
Thank you.
So what's our next step, Cory? After we, when we say that these are good, the guidelines are good, what's the next step?
To put notice in the paper that you're going to have a public, public hearing or opportunity for public comment.
Would our public hearing be our meeting, like our next month's meeting? Or does it have to be separate from the meeting?
We have talked about doing it two different ways. You know, it could be at the same meeting, but if you, I would recommend you have it a different day so that you can have a public comment and so you can, you can digest what they say and then make any changes that you want. Like the county does it, like, they have it the same day but at different times. But I would say maybe, like, have it in between this meeting and your next meeting, or, you know, have, have the public hearing on your regular meeting and then have one in between so that you have some time to make changes, if you would like.
Okay. So if, if we take with the changes that we want made with this, if they make those changes, we can, we don't have to vote on that, right? We can say with the changes that, that we talked about, have a public meeting before our next meeting and then adopt these at our next meeting. Does that work?
Assuming we can actually get out reasonable notice between now and the time you want to have a hearing.
For the. Yeah.
Yeah. If it was in between, it might not have enough time. But if you want to have the public hearing at your next, at the April meeting, I think you could do that, definitely.
How much time do you have to give?
I have to give a moment.
There is no definition of what reasonable notice means, but with the Columbia Daily Herald, which is where we put out notice, sometimes it takes a little bit to get notice in the paper.
Okay.
So that's what I'm concerned about.
Take three days to get notice in the paper. And we try and give, like, ordinance, by law, we have to give fifteen days, and I think that's a good model to follow.
Yeah.
That's the way I do it in the planning commission and every other board. I think fifteen days is substantial. That's, that's a two week time period. And then taking into consideration the three or four days that it might take for the Daily Herald. So you're looking at, you're pushing twenty days to get a notice out. And that's typically the way it works with all my other boards.
So we could possibly do that public hearing before our next meeting.
Or do it at our next meeting and then call a special one with just us so we can review them together.
Well, but she, what Cory was saying is that she wants to give us some time between the comments.
Right.
And, yes, and, and so if we did it before, we did it in, say, twenty days, and then on the twenty-second, then we have our meeting, the first week of April, then we would have the comments and we could discuss them at our meeting and then approve whatever.
If you have the public hearing on the week of the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth, then you've had a week at least to digest their comments, and you can still have your regular meeting the first week of April.
That's what I propose we do.
But there. For me, we can get the changes done.
Well, I'll just speak for myself because I have to put out the public notice and I'll have to, we got, and I'm not trying to put this on the back burner, but this, this month is pretty busy as far as I'm concerned. I've got the public notices out for all the meetings. Now we have to address the meetings. But if we are to get any corrections done, that means that I'm, I'm going to have to do the corrections. I'll have to wait on everybody to give me an email saying that the document looks good, or here's a couple of corrections. I'll have to make the changes. Then I'll have to close the document back out. Then we'll have to set the meeting at the last part of January, which means that I'll have to orchestrate a public notice for a meeting before our regular meeting. And then I'll have to do the same thing with a shorter amount of time.
Right. Why don't you pick a timeline, you want to do the public hearing, and we'll work with that.
Yeah, I, I, I think.
I think, I don't think you can make the changes, Robert, until they convene together and discuss them as a group. One person sending you a change does not mean you make that change. It's this historic commission that agrees that we're going to make a change after the public input.
Hey, I think.
If we do it all, I'm going to have to go down.
Misspellings and those kind of minor things.
Yeah, the, the changes that he's making is he's changing it from Collierville to Mount Pleasant and some changes to spelling. Those are the only changes that need to be made right now.
Well, I work at the, I, I work at the city's expense and this board, so I'll do whatever y'all want to. I will try my best to get, if we want to have a meeting within this month, I'll try my best to arrange that. I know at the latter part of this month, I'll be taking a couple of days off, but, and I think it probably falls around that twenty-seven, twenty-eight timeframe.
How long does the, the other board members need to review and submit changes to Robert as a group, since that's considered talking in our, how long does everybody need? Couple days?
Well, you have to do that publicly. Is there a way that any substantive comments could be made tonight so that it's all out in the open and he can make those, you know, and whenever it's done, he would send it back out? Because I don't want to get into a situation where y'all are meeting via email in private.
To make spelling changes?
No, not to make clerical. I'm talking about substantive changes to the document as far as are there any things that we want to talk about?
Cory, I don't think there were any substantive changes made to be made. According from what I hear, I think everybody, you know, said this was okay. The only ones were the few to change Collierville to Mount Pleasant, and there's a couple that I know of misspellings in there.
I think substantive changes would come possibly after the public hearing, and that's when you would all regroup to vote on that.
Yeah.
Right.
My worry is for the last meeting we had, y'all gave some comments on things that you wanted to change. Robert made those changes and put them back at the running time. We only got to number one of those changes, so for my piece of mind, I'd like y'all to talk through and give approval for the other changes that he made during that past one.
Okay.
That would make it clearer.
Like the arts and mural one?
Yeah, murals was, is the biggest one that I worked on. We can have some sort of discussion on that. That would be helpful, I think.
That's actually on page twenty-nine.
It, you know, it read fine to me. There is no, from what I understand, there's no way that we can, is there any way, there's no way to control the subject of the mural. Is that correct?
That is my legal opinion.
Okay.
That we can't regulate content. People put those in these documents all the time. They get challenged all the time. So to me, the only way to regulate content and not have murals, and that's not what y'all can do, so these are, these are, I think, constitutionally sound regulations on group speech.
Sounds good to me. I know that we made some changes to the sign ordinance, too, but I read through that and that looks, that was good. So I was fine with the whole document, like I said. I know that we're going to, there's going to be some things that come up that we're going to need to change in here. But as long as we can make those changes without going through a long, drawn-out thing, you know. And just right now, I don't know what those changes would be, but I'm sure that something's going to come up sometime that we're going to go, oh, we should have gone this way or something like that, so.
Now that I have my, my email up, I can speak a little better, but if you want to make changes, you know, if y'all implement these guidelines and then you find out a year from now, like this is too restrictive or not restrictive enough or what have you, you can go through the same process where you give reasonable public notice, opportunity for public comment, and then you pass them again. So it, it's the same as right here. It doesn't go anywhere else. It just goes to y'all to the Historic Zoning Commission.
Okay.
To change.
Thank you.
I'd like to bring up a point on the, on page twenty-nine, on the public arts and murals. Everybody, if you're looking at B, where it says, "Murals shall be located only on buildings that have historically been painted." Painting on contributing buildings that were not historically painted is prohibited. However, locating a mural on an unpainted, non-contributing building may be considered by the HCC. Okay, so I don't think that I have it that I'm aware of. And I might have done it by accident, but I don't think there's a point to where we have actually labeled in inventory contributing or non-contributing buildings.
There is in that, Robert, in the, what's it called? The historic zoning that we went through, the designation. There is, it lists contributing and non-contributing buildings with the Historical Society.
And I know what you're talking about. So I have, I've already accomplished that. Thank you. I've already accomplished that in the inventory because all of the records from the Historical Society have been made applicable to those specific buildings. So we do have several contributing buildings down here. I just didn't label them as such. I labeled them as recognized by the Historical Society, but we did. Just clear that up. Thank you, Donna.
And like the, the building that our mural is on, that is not a contributing building, so it was fine to do that.
Yes, that's correct. Okay. Thank, thank you for clearing that up. And I, I'll probably, just for my own knowledge, I'll probably go back and label them contributing, non-contributing versus recognized because that's the way I labeled the, the buildings that are actually contributing. So we do have that. Thank you very much.
Okay.
And there were, there were a couple of things, uh, that were taken out of seven, uh, that I originally pulled from Columbia's murals. And that was done after myself and Ms. Jones had spoken at length about it, emailed back and forth, and based upon her legal opinion, those were, you know, they were, they were pulled from the documents, so you don't see those. You don't have to worry about them, they're not there. Uh, it's been vetted and I pulled them only because, uh, legally, Ms. Jones recommended that I do so, so.
I have a question. And it might be in here and I'm missing it. Something that was in for me is, I just wanna know why you took it out, um, unless I'm missing it. Something about art versus advertising. You know, like our Milltown Hemp is obviously advertising Milltown Hemp in their mural. And we're advertising Mount Pleasant, but so like that specific company that's there can't, we can't paint SSD on the side of smelter buildings, you know?
Right, I found, um, a case that says that if you have to look at the image to decide whether or not it's commercial speech, then that is content regulation and you're not allowed to do it. Um, so anytime you have to approve or deny something based on what it, it, what it says, you get into this constitutional issue. And so that was the case that I found that, well, I researched this a lot in the past, but the specific case that I found was exactly about that. They, uh, a city had a municipal, it was in New Orleans, they had a municipal, um, I guess it was New Orleans itself, had an ordinance that said you couldn't have, um, you couldn't have advertising within your mural and it was struck down by the court because it was, it was content regulation. So that was the rationale behind them. And I was on the same side and I took out everything that looked content, like it was regulated content to me. Um, like I said before, you know, Columbia obviously has it in there. You know, you know, you can do things, but they will be, you know, they could be challenged and it's just a risk reward that you're trying to make, but my legal opinion would be that those things would not be allowed.
Okay, well, it all has to come before us anyway, so.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think we find ways to talk about it with the applicant, which would not be a written regulation.
Well, and if, so that would, if, if it was a company's name in there, that would, uh, fall under the sign ordinance then, instead of the mural ordinance, correct?
The same case, you know, made that ar, the same, the city made that argument in this case and they said, point blank, period, if you're regulating murals, it is what, a mural is anything painted on the building. You can only regulate the, the size and things like that. That if you have to look at it to decide, is it a sign or is it a mural? Is it commercial, is it not, then you are regulating content. So it is really confusing. You really can't regulate content, I don't know a better way to, I, I can't expound on that very much, but if you have to look at it and say, I like this or don't like this, or approve this or I don't approve this, based on what it is, you run into a potential constitutional issue.
Okay.
But again, that's, my opinion is based on what I've reviewed. If y'all decide to do otherwise, then you just go with it and deal with any, you know, if you don't think there'll be any consequences, that's, that you're right with the board.
No, I mean, that's, that's the reason you're here is because we're gonna take your advice, that, that's it, I say anyway.
There will be consequences, yes.
I totally agree, I was just wondering what it was, you know, because I agree with, with, you know, we have two that advertise the company. Our Heritage Bank, I think, has the heritage in it, you know, so I kind of agree with it, but I was wondering why and that makes a difference.
I, uh, love the First Amendment and the First Amendment analysis and I would be happy to forward y'all any of these cases and my, you know, commentary on it. Now, Robert's sick of hearing it, so that's the only one he can hear.
I believe you, Cory.
That's how I feel about the irritable highlighters I brought today.
So Cory, I do appreciate all your input on that. Uh, and I certainly take your advice anytime you give it, so. Anytime that you have advice, don't just feed it to me. I'll, I'll listen and I might grumble and growl a couple of times, but, uh, it's, it's trustworthy, so that's, that's what we want to hear. Was there anything else that, uh, needed, needed a little more discussion, uh, from either members or Cory? Any specifics out of the guidelines that you wanna discuss a little further with us?
Do you have any more substantial changes, Robert, that I missed?
The only one I can remember that we made was we put the burden on applicants to decide whether or not a building, or to prove whether or not a building had been previously painted.
That's correct.
I don't remember what that is in the document.
Uh, yes, it's, I can't remember exactly where it's at, but it does speak and it's just kind of a, uh, uh, for lack of a better word, it's, it's, it's in parentheses, it's very small, I think it's in parentheses in one, one page of this, but it does lay the responsibility on the applicant. If they are to want to paint that building, that proves to us that historically, that building has been painted. And I'm trying to find it right now, I can't remember exactly where it was at, but, uh.
Probably on 18 somewhere.
Where I was thinking too.
Um, page 19, 10C.
It's on 18.
Yes, 10C?
Yeah.
Research and proof for the responsibility of the applicant. So yes, that is one change that we did make, and I spoke with Cory about this because, uh, you know, painting color on a building, as you see there on that page, you know, we can look at and regulate as this board. I don't think the responsibility should lie to us to keep a inventory of historically painted buildings. So that was one of the reasons I wanted to add that verbiage to this document. Because the applicant is coming before us requesting. I just think it's appropriate that they show proof in some form or fashion as to the building.
Wouldn't that picture of the building show that it's been painted?
Well, it's kind of open-ended, so that's, that's why I wanted the, the proof to the applicant to be there, so, I don't, I mean, yes. To me, I guess, a picture of the building would show that it, it's been painted.
I mean, they could see, I mean, there's remnants if a building's been painted.
Most certainly.
Even lightly, they can say, it's been painted, might've been years ago.
Yes.
And then that gives them the leadway to paint.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I don't think it's such a big deal, but I don't want that responsibility to fall to this board.
Right.
So I did put that as a requirement in here. I don't see an issue with it, I just wanted to make the board aware of it that that isn't.
Yeah, I don't think that we have any buildings in, in our downtown area that the paint's been taken off of, it's been painted and then the paint's been taken off of.
Faded away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have some, you know, that shouldn't have been painted, but that was.
Okay, just as, just as long as the board's comfortable with it. I mean, it's a, it's a little short portion, but I think it's, yeah. I think the applicant should be responsible. If there's any question in anybody's mind, I think the applicant should be responsible, bring it up for it.
The only other thing I remember is like in the signs, um, we had talked about, um, I think in the, um, in the, uh, regular zoning that you can't have, um, signs for upstairs, um, in upstairs, uh, businesses, but we can't, you can have on this one.
Yes, that, that was, uh, myself and Cory spoke about that. In this case, and Cory chime in, in this case, our design guidelines are less restrictive than what our zoning ordinance is.
Right.
Uh, so Cory, can you speak to that just a little bit?
I don't remember, I remember talking about it, but I don't remember which change we made. Is that one, did we leave it the same?
We left it the same, yes ma'am.
Which, what are you looking?
Uh, hang on just a second and I'll find it for you here.
Secondary elevation?
Should be, yeah, probably secondary elevation.
Under signs. Um, page 27 on two, um, the number, um, businesses on the, uh, number E, businesses on the upper floors of a building are permitted one wall sign adjacent to the entrance. I mean, I think that that's good. I'm not asking that we change it, I just know that we had discussed and in the regular zoning, there's no signs for upstairs is what you told us, Robert.
That's correct, and it, it actually, it actually.
Signs like, kinda thing, but.
It actually spoke, uh, in E, under two, on page 28.
Yeah.
Window signs, yes. Window signs should obscure not more than 15% of window gla, uh, window glass. There was a section that we spoke about, uh, in relation to window signs being upstairs in which it's, it wasn't even allowed by the zoning ordinance for secondary elevation. Um, but it is allowed by the guidelines.
Right.
And I think from our conversation, Cory, if I'm not mistaken, because the guidelines, in this case, the guidelines can be more restrictive than the zoning ordinance, but when they're less restrictive, what do you do?
I think where we added, uh, the very first page, the purpose, we added, we added the language from the state statute that says if there is any conflict, the zoning, or the historic zoning guideline control.
There we go, that's what we did, to alleviate that concern, yes.
Yeah, so that's good.
Yes.
I just wanted to point that out because we had discussed that at our last meeting and, and, um, I, I like these, I think it belongs in there, so.
But that, that is correct, uh, she added that verbiage there at the front to answer any questions such as that, so.
Robert, when you're talking about, um, uh, Rob, I mean, window signs, are you talking about somebody painting on the window? When you're talking about a window sign, what, what are we talking about?
Either or.
You know, like there's a couple of old windows here where it has like doctor so-and-so on the window that's still up. Is that what you're talking about, they put their business on the glass?
That's correct, yes.
Oh, okay.
Or even a hanging sign, I mean, a window sign that's in a, that's in a window or a hanging sign on a window could be considered.
But it can only take up so much percent of the glass.
According to the guidelines, 15%, according to our zoning ordinance, it's 5%.
Okay. I'm curious.
So, yeah, 15% on the guidelines, which would be enforceable for this board.
Okay.
Uh, uh, that's the percentage of glass that can cover, yes ma'am.
But they, they're also permitted a wall sign.
That's correct.
Adjacent to their entrance.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Which makes sense, this is right there where they're gonna enter that business.
Yes.
Right.
Is everybody comfortable, um, any more discussion right now on the guidelines themselves? Is everybody comfortable with the certificate of appropriateness, uh, that was included in your pack as well? Uh, the bylaws, I think it speaks to everything. I do want to discuss something with the board as soon as we finish discussing the guidelines, uh, in relation to our bylaw.
Thanks for all y'all done on this, it was great.
Thank y'all for being so patient with, uh, all of it. Karen, if, nobody wants to discuss the guidelines anymore, uh, we can come back to them. I'd like to talk specific to the bylaws, to the board.
Okay. Sure.
If everybody will take a look at your bylaws real quick? Get those out. We'll actually be on, uh, second page, we're looking at section, Article 3, Membership Section 2, Attendance, absences and vacancies.
I think we can probably eliminate our architect on that basis.
That's what I was gonna bring to the board's attention.
She hasn't since.
That's what I was gonna bring to the board's attention, I wanted to do it tonight. Uh, uh, we have had, uh, one board member that has not been present. Uh, maybe one or two of our meetings since we started having, having them. And I haven't spoken with her, I don't know the reasoning behind, uh, her not showing up. I have sent packets and different things out to her every month.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I've had no reply, I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that that's something that you probably need to consider moving on, so we can recommend maybe some, uh, suggestions to the mayor for an appointment of a different member, uh, if that's something that y'all choose to do.
I certainly have made the motion that we, if we can recruit a replacement that can actually attend the meetings.
Yeah.
I spoke with her Friday.
Okay.
And she wants to, and she wants to participate.
Okay.
Spoke with her again yesterday. And I don't know why she's not here, her, her plan was to be here tonight and be engaged.
Yeah.
But if she's not willing to do that, then we have to move forward.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, again, I, I'll make the motion that we replace her. Lindsay, you wanna second that again?
I second another chance. You can say all you want, she wants to be here, but if she said it yesterday and doesn't make it, I think we explore other options.
Yeah.
Well, according to this, the mayor has to remove her, it has to go before the board of commission, the commissioners, in order to remove her, and it's a decision by the mayor, um.
You're not gonna do that without the recommendation of the Historical, uh, Commission, so.
Yeah, and I, I think that we can make that recommendation, but I don't think that it's not, that's, correct.
I, I, I believe you're correct, I'll, I'll let Cory chime in, and the only thing that, and I agree with you because there hasn't been any participation, but it's really hard in a town as small as ours to get professionals, and she was an architect. That's kinda how we got her on the board. If anybody has any ideas of people in the community, she doesn't live in the city and you don't necessarily have to, to try and find that area of expertise, but we would be looking to get some ass. But we would be looking to get some assistance on finding the right person to replace her. I feel like the mayor will follow your recommendation.
Well, and what Kate, what, um, Robert and I talked about this earlier. I think that, you know, if, if we had a construction for somebody that, you know, is in construction or, uh, somebody that has some kind of, I don't know, basis with surveying or anything like that. Um, if we can come up with like three names that we could make recommendations, um, for replacement, um, because it doesn't do us any good for her to be an architect if she's not here.
All right, Cory, a hundred percent. It just, trying to find some of that skill set would be helpful to the board. Cory, is that the process that the, this board recommends to the full commission? While she's looking, you know, Fernando Carvalho does a lot of house flipping over here and does a lot of the work himself. So he might be interested because he flips homes and it will eventually affect the home seeps. But I don't know if he's interested. And then the Tejans guy did it together.
Her key.
Yeah.
And let's make sure that that's true relationship for. I mean, I, I, we have all healthy, but I'm not called. I'm not going to take the same. It's hard to find somebody that does credentials.
Right.
To volunteer to do this, but, uh, if, if they're not here, they're not having any input anyway. But I really wish we could find somebody that's a little bit more technically qualified than.
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe an engineer if we have somebody that, you know, um, or developer. Basically, I guess my question is, what would, as an architect, what would we need? I guess when they, they present, if somebody comes before this board and they present, um, plans, so somebody that could read plans and that type of thing is, is what I'm thinking.
I finally found the bylaws. What I have is a draft, but I'm pretty sure it's the same with what y'all are talking about. You do make a recommendation to, um, remove this commissioner to the mayor and the board of commissioners and then they, they ratify your decision or, you know, they vote to remove them and then they will appoint somebody. The mayor will appoint and the commission will ratify that decision. Okay. You make a recommendation.
So does that come via a vote, Cory, from this board or just a recommendation that's seconded and then a, then a vote would take place?
I think they should vote on the motion that is pending.
It's not.
Motion to recommend that replace this member.
Even though it's not on the agenda or the public notice?
Even though it's not on the agenda. Yeah.
Okay.
We have a motion for Mr. Dotson to remove the architect from the historical zoning commission. Uh, Ms. Barrier has seconded that. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? No. Motion passes.
Okay. Chairman, thank you. Thank the board members. I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. And this will be forwarded, the recommendation from this board will be forwarded to the mayor. We'll take the following steps and address that. All that I ask is that, uh, I agree with Donna. I think if we can come up with three good names, maybe, um, as suggestions that might work. So put your thinking caps on, I guess, and, um, you know, try to, try to help me with that i- if, if you would, or recommendations, suggestions.
How does she get notified?
The only way I, I know to notify her is via certified mail. Uh, send her a packet. Send her a package just like I would you to her location. And anytime I email out, she's included in all the email.
No, what I'm saying is if they, if they vote to remove her, um, and the commission approves it, then how, how is she notified of that?
I would recommend that she gets noticed that there's been a vote to send the recommendation to the mayor. And so she's aware, be voted on. She can come to the public meeting and speak on her behalf if she wants to. And then, then in fairness to everybody, there's been notice on that.
Yeah, I think that's, I, I just, I knew that there needed to be something like that. Yeah, okay.
Have that constitution for, for attend all hearing proceedings and access to the city attorney. And to complete her case for sure. Yeah.
But she might not even show up for that.
We'll get that letter together. Plenty of time in that. We will, um, probably not address this until the April agenda so that we get the letter out. There's time for response and we go from there.
Okay, sounds good.
Now, Robert, should we go back and talk about a proposed schedule for the public hearing?
I agree a hundred percent.
So we can get some dates put down?
Yes, sir. You can open that up and, uh, discuss that because I, I'll take the notes and, and we'll.
Yes, I need everybody's input. We all need to get together and hammer out a schedule for how we're going to proceed. There seems to be a lot of events coming up in the next, you know, two months and when do we need certain things done by, let's put it that way, because we know we have to have a public hearing. We have to incorporate those changes. We need to make sure notice goes out. We have a fifteen day window on that. Sounds like the Daily Herald or in what time. And I would like to do is put down the, the events with some dates so we have something to kind of march to.
The second week of April spring break, so.
And we have spring break coming up in April.
That's the week that we have our meeting, but that's the week of spring break. So I don't know how that's going to affect anybody.
So Robert, how do you want to go about that spring break and all your stuff going on?
I would recommend that, um, we get these changes. If y'all get, uh, I mean, we already talked about the changes that really need to be made here in this document, uh, I think. And, uh, Ms. Marini, if you would, just forward me those clerical as well.
Couple of them.
Yeah. And anybody else that has any knowledge of anything that needs to be added to the document, send it to me via email. I'll make those changes. Y'all can do that, um, you know, uh, early to mid next week. I can make those changes pretty quickly. Then if y'all would like to, we can shoot for a, I, I know the last, I, I'm just going to tell you the last week of March, I'll be out of, well, the last full week of March, beginning of the twenty-second through the twenty-sixth. You know, we could, we could possibly do a meeting sometime that week for a public hearing. If y'all, if y'all, you know, wanted to do that. And then move forward to our following month's meeting, the changes on the document after the considering all public, considering the public hearing comments, if there are any. And then finalize the documents, either with special call later on in the month of April or wait till our very next meeting in May. Cory, does that sound?
Number of changes you have, you may have plenty of time to do before the April sixth meeting, just depending on what feedback you get.
That's correct. Yes. Cory, does that sound, um, like a good timeline?
Yeah, I think that works. You're talking March twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, sometime in that time period.
Uh, yes, yes, ma'am. Uh, yes, ma'am. I, I would suggest though that the board don't sit for the twenty-sixth. I don't think I'll be present. Uh, I'll actually be out. So early in that week would work better for me.
And then, yeah, I think that works. I think we could go ahead and get a notice in the paper pretty quick.
But you're saying that, so you're not still saying to have the two town hall meetings, only have the one?
There'll be one that's a public hearing and that's the one we're talking about scheduling now. And then you'll have your regular fall meeting in April and at that time you can adopt.
Okay. So but that one won't be a town hall meeting. That would just be, right, that'd just be our official meeting, not another town hall meeting. Cause earlier you said we needed to have it two different times.
You have to have open meetings two different times. The first one, the town hall meeting is a public hearing. People come and get to talk. The next meeting will be y'all, exactly what this is, the scheduled meeting. But the only thing on the agenda will be approving the historic zoning gap.
They're all open to the public.
Yes.
The one public hearing and one regular meeting.
Okay, okay.
So would the board consider doing it on the twenty-third of March? But today's the second.
Yeah, it works.
Well, I think what I understand of the Daily Herald is if you send them notice tomorrow, the earliest it's going to be in the paper is going to be Sunday or Monday. And that, you're still giving fifteen days notice.
Yep.
That's, yes, ma'am. If I get the notice out tomorrow, you're correct. Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, and I will try my best. I mean, you still, that still gives us plenty of time though, even if not, even if I'm not able to get the notice out till, uh, a couple of days after or even next.
I think it gives you a couple of days to do it for sure.
Yeah, yeah. So would the board consider having a meeting on the twenty-third? That'll be a Tuesday and that's normally the days we meet on.
That works for me.
Yeah.
Works for me. Good.
Yep.
Five P M?
Five P M. Yes, ma'am. I would think. And as soon as y'all can get y'all, um, any edits that, um, you would just send to me, uh, I can change it in the document, clerical, uh, edits and then have the public hearing.
It's only Tuesday. I think we can get them to you by the end of the week versus early next week.
Okay. That'll be great.
And I can't figure.
I'll, I'll have the ones that tomorrow.
Okay, good.
There's only a couple of them.
Okay. Well, chairman and board members, that's really all that we had for, uh, discussion tonight. I think we made great progress. So we do have a plan of action set in place and hopefully in April we'll have these ready to be reviewed and approved so we can move forward. I thank everybody again for all their patience and.
Thank you, Robert.
Uh, working with me and that's, that's all I have for tonight. Yes.
I say thank you.
I'll hurt with rocks. I'm sorry.
Yes, appreciate your effort, Robert.
Yeah, we did.
If there's not any additional discussion.
There you go.
That's what they were waiting on.
We have a motion from Mr. Dotson and who seconded that?
Donna did this one.
Aye. We have a second from Ms. Marini. Y'all in favor? Say aye.
Everybody gone.
Motion passed. Well, thank you all. It was a good meeting.
Thank you. I don't think anyone else can make that motion. Not anymore. Thank you. Good night. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. They say.